All right. We're gonna get started here, people. All right, we have reconvened from closed session and I would like to make the following announcement. By a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Yasir Al Najjar DBA, The Illusion Smoke Shop versus the City of Elk Grove, as identified by the case number, on the City Council meeting agenda. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:00 PM. And that brings us to our regular City Council meeting. I would like to call the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, October the 11th, 2023. It is 6:01 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is being closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays on Friday, October 13th at 2:30 PM and Sunday, October 15th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at the3w.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrokable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. The City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. They're the blue cards that can be found at the back of the chamber and provided to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will move into the roll call. And starting with the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spies.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. And you'll start to see these at the beginning of our City Council meetings moving forward. So, "We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Ranteria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endure because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders." Next up, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me for our pledge? And Mr. Mendoza, I see you're in the audience. Would you like to lead us in the pledge this evening? If you wish. Yes. Yeah. Yes, Gary.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Thank you, everyone. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, so next up is our approval of the agenda. I would like to read a quick statement. And that is, "Elk Grove is in good faith discussions with the applicant of Oak Rose Accelerate Housing Group. The city is having meaningful conversations," pardon me, I just lost it here, "is having meaningful conversations about an alternative site in hopes of reaching an agreement. We are in the early stages of this process and will continue to do our due diligence in hopes of finding a win-win solution if possible. The city remains committed to meeting our affordable housing needs. The City Council has approved many other affordable housing projects, including those with permanent supportive housing." At this time, I would like to ask the Council to, as we approve the agenda, if we can move Item 8.2 right after our presentations.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we will hear that item. But again, we've made the motion to, in hopes of continuing this item, for those that are joining us this evening. With that, can I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Closed session, there's nothing.
That'll advance us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, and that first being Item 4.1, our proclamation in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month.
Excellent. We would like to call up Eli Galindo. And then my council colleague will read the resolution.
So in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, it gives me great pride and honor to acknowledge a good friend of mine in my family for over two decades for this occasion. And as you know, Eli is like, we go way back. And with your father Jesse as well, and with my brother, his family, my mom, and everything. So just to acknowledge you for the work you're doing in the community and the leadership you've carried and the example that you lead is truly something to acknowledge and really bestow upon. So I really thank you for being here tonight and thank your family for being here as well. So as I go into the proclamation, I'd like to give a couple of bullet points, but to give the overall picture and then draw it in close. So here we go. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an official celebration of Hispanic Americans whose ancestry can be traced back to Spain, Mexico, Central and South America and the Caribbean, a recognition that started as a week-long celebration in 1968 and 28 years later, expanded to dedicate a month recognizing the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our society. And the objectives of Hispanic Heritage Month are to create a greater awareness of Hispanic contributions to American culture by celebrating the histories, cultures, and customs to illustrate the diversity of the Hispanic community and to encourage a greater curiosity within generations about the rich history and cultural heritage of Hispanics. And the City of Elk Grove is honored to recognize a man of faith, a community leader, speaker, and motivational influencer and real estate professional, Eli Galindo, who is dedicated to community development and spiritual wellness of people. Eli is a father of four children, all in their twenties, two beautiful granddaughters, and has been married to his lovely wife for 25 years. And Eli Galindo has been in the real estate industry since 1994, starting as an executive assistant to a mortgage professional while attending junior college at Kasuma's River College and growing up to manage three local real estate and mortgage branches where he was responsible for leading, training, and inspiring many professionals. And Eli is presently the team leader, office manager, for Keller Williams Realty Elk Grove. Eli also manages with the community as the project coordinator for Upon This Rock Ministries at Assemblies of God World Missions, in addition to serving at his local church, Project Church. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims September 15th, 2023 through October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Elk Grove. Thanks Eli for his commitment to the community and encourages the community to celebrate a collective progress shared with the Hispanic community. Learn by seeing the strength that derives from our diversity and honor a shared spirit of self-determination, dignity, and respect for all cultural heritage. Signed on this 11th day of October, 2023. Congratulations, Eli.
Would you like to say something, Mr. Galindo?
Yes, I would. Thank you so much. I just want to say I'm so honored and humbled to receive this recognition and just share a short story about my family. My grandparents got here in the early 1900s and my grandfather on my dad's side, he ran a braceros program. And my grandmother would cook for 75 men, three meals a day. And that was the start of our heritage here. Now, the heritage had begun long before that. And yet, when we got here, that story ties to my life, which ties to my kids, which will tie to my grandkids. And the thing I remember the most is going to visit my grandparents as they picked prunes in Morgan Hill as a young man, 10, 11, 12 years old. My grandfather on my mother's side was in charge of a prune field, a large one. And we would sleep sometimes, and I thought it was fun. You know, we would sleep sometimes in these big army tents in the field and there were pellets on the ground. And that's where we laid, you know? And it was, it was fun. It was fun to me and I was excited to be there. And I remember them, they had a small mobile home at a local mobile home park. And I remember many times, with eight siblings, like, and their kids sometimes, there was 20 of us sleeping in this mobile home. And we would lay on the floor. And I remember getting up at night to get something to drink, I would have to walk very carefully to get to the kitchen, you know? And these are the stories that I remember because here's what happens in those moments. Grandfather's playing music on a guitar, we're singing, we're enjoying a meal, we're laughing. And that's really our heritage. It's hard work, it's family, and it's growing in the best we can be. And I really appreciate this honor tonight. Thank you so much.
Congrats. So we're gonna come down there and present this to you?
Yes, please.
You should be there and we'll just look ahead here. I'll come over here. No, we're standing around. Does that work?
Tighter?
Yeah, a little bit tighter.
Turn sideways, everybody.
You guys step forward just a little bit and yeah.
Turn sideways.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One more for good measure. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Galindo, it's been a pleasure seeing how you run your real estate office and just your leadership skills and how you inspire others. I've had the privilege of speaking before your group a few times. And just thank you for all of your service and commitment to our city. Thank you. All right, so next up is our proclamation in recognition of October as Filipino History Month. I would like to call up Dick Maison and Jinky Dolar, if you're here. Are you here? Jinky's here. Yes, please come up. And then my council colleague will be reading the recognition.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
And the community, please.
Hey.
This is for everyone.
Well, this is why they're walking up. This is one of the best parts of these meetings for all of us, starting, you know, tonight with honoring a member of our community who is a member of the Hispanic community. Mr. Galindo, thank you for sharing that story with us. I would like to thank yours embodies, represents the City of Elk Grove with a strong diverse background and many folks in the, from the immigrant community. Now we have the opportunity to recognize the entire Filipino community for this month, Filipino History Month. And I know Mr. Maison from the Filipino community of Sacramento and vicinity isn't, I guess, is he able, he wasn't here tonight? Okay, okay, thank you. Well, I see a lot of aunties here tonight, so good evening, aunties. Yes.
Okay, we're the elders in the Filipino community.
Auntie, let me honor you first, please. I'm gonna beg, I apologize. So, and I just also want to recognize Jinky Dolar, who is very active in the Filipino community in Elk Grove. Thank you all for being here. I won't read it all, so Auntie, you could, you could talk sooner.
Okay.
Whereas this is an appropriate time to promote and reflect on the richness of Filipino and Filipino-American history and culture and to provide all Americans with the opportunity to learn, honor, and appreciate Filipino-American identity and her historic and social contributions to the fabric of the United States of America. And whereas immigrants from the Philippines and their families truly have enriched our nation, state, and the city for their work, through their work and contributions in agriculture, their service in the armed forces, their offerings, skills, and expertise as engineers, scientists, entrepreneurs, accountants, teachers, lawyers, nurses, doctors, and their participation in public offices, civic affairs, and community activities. And whereas today, the Filipino-American community is the third-largest Asian-American group in the United States with an estimated 4.2 million people, second-largest Asian-American group in California, and the 15,000-plus-strong Filipino community plays a vital role in the City of Elk Grove's rich history and helps to shape its development and landscape. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims October 2023 as Filipino-American History Month in the City of Elk Grove and encourages the community to celebrate, reflect, learn, honor, and appreciate Filipino-American identity and the historic and social contributions made to the fabric of the United States of America. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. I'm Josipatria and this is Lilia Rivera. Lilia Rivera and I are delighted and honored to receive this important proclamation recognizing the Filipino-American History Month from the City of Elk Grove. We are receiving this on behalf of the Filipino community in Sacramento and also on behalf of the more than 16,000 Filipino-Americans living in Elk Grove. We are grateful for this month of October designated as the Filipino-American History Month, which gives us the chance to celebrate and appreciate the history and legacy of the Filipinos living in the United States. I turn to you, Lilia Rivera, for added remarks.
Thank you. We are honored to receive the proclamation. Now, there is one contribution of the Filipinos that often is overlooked and mentioned, not mentioned in publication. It is the contribution of the California Filipino farmers who were the first to strike for better working and living condition. It is later dubbed as the Delano Strike. The leaders were Larry Etiong and Philip Veracruz. Okay. The farm workers, the farm owners pitted the Mexican farm workers and the Filipino farm workers. Okay. Because of the number, the superior number of the Mexicans, Larry Etiong enlisted their help. Poor while their leader, the Mexican leader, Cesar Chavez, hesitated because he said they were not prepared. Okay? So now you know the rest of the story. And thank you, Mayor Bobby Singh, and members of the council. We love your proclamation. And thank you again. Maraming salamat.
(Applause).
One step this way. One step to the left of the Vice Mayor, yeah. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you all so much. (Applause).
We just want to again recognize and thank you for all of the contributions. There's been a number of Filipino-American History Month events throughout our city. There was one this past weekend and there's a few more coming up, one on Friday and then on Saturday as well. So council colleagues, I'm sure we will out be celebrating with all of you. Thank you and congratulations once again. Next up is our proclamation recognizing October 8th through the 14th, 2023, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week. And I would like to call up our code enforcement staff and council colleague will be reading the proclamation. Hi. Okay.
I know there's more. I was, I was waiting for some more, but no, just wanted to say, you know, thank you for all the work you do and for all the work the department and everyone does. It's very important for our community, especially when enforcing the code. Sometimes the, our constituents, you're the first ones that they see and then you're also the first ones they yell at, right? But you're enforcing the code, you're enforcing the law, and you're making sure that everything's abiding. I know that staff does, works really hard just to make sure that it's, it's all good. So I appreciate it. I know that council colleagues appreciate it and thank you for the hard work. And I will begin by reading the proclamation. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of our residents, visitors, and businesses in the City of Elk Grove through the enforcement of local and state laws addressing building safety, zoning, housing, environmental protection, and delights. Code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deteriorations, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through the applications of housing, zoning, and building. Whereas the City of Elk Grove recognizes and honors the code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledges their role in leading the way to continue the high quality of life we enjoy in our community. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the second week of October 2023 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week and encourages residents and business owners to join in giving the utmost esteem respect for the work, dedication, and commitment these fine individuals do.
Mayor, members of the council.
Yes.
I'd like to introduce to our new code enforcement manager, Jose Mendez, and we'll do probably a more official introduction next, at our introductory of new staff at next meeting.
Wonderful. Well, welcome.
Welcome, Jose.
Would you like to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. For the recognition, thank you for the time and the support. Only three weeks in, but it's very clear that we, I have a group of great professionals working for me and I feel very fortunate to be part of the bigger family of Elk Grove and appreciate the support here. I also want to take the time to thank our police department, the City Attorney's Office, and everyone that supports us on a daily basis to do our job. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And look forward to working with y'all.
Thank you and welcome to our city.
Thank you.
We'll come down here and present this to you.
She's the fellow Rosa, but that is saying.
Ready? One, two, three. One more for good measure. One, two, three.
Welcome to the city.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You can go home now.
All right, next up is our Arts Commission Annual Update. A presentation from Nan Mahan. Please join us in welcoming our Arts Commission.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and councilman. My name is Nan Mahan. I am the chairperson for the Elk Grove Arts Commission. I'd like to introduce my other fellow commissioners tonight. With me is Show Grace Greiss, who is the Vice Chair, and Liz Irons. Our other commissioners, which are, I believe Sally Guttridge is selling the Blue Daniel tonight and can't be with us. And Leslie Sanderfer. I don't believe Leslie's here either. And then, of course, our staff liaison, Lena Yosimera, who does all the heavy lifting for us and we could not function at all without her and her crew. I just wanted to go over with you tonight some of the things that, our accomplishments and our plans, because you understand, this is both, speaking for myself and I'm sure for the other commissioners, this is both our pride and our passion to bring arts to the city. When the year began, we wanted to use the percentage for the art projects to beautify our parks, such as Oasis Parks and the Old Town Plaza. We wanted to use murals to brighten up the city. And of course, my favorite events, the Blues Review and Copa Club. And we do a lot of advisory activities as well. We opened Oasis Park in July of this last year, this year still. And we advised the artists who came to us that we wanted both color and imagination in our playground. And we feel that we got that in a playground that is a little bit different than the traditional, but still brings out a story for every child to tell for themselves. And so we were happy to get that accomplished. We also then have worked on the Old Town Plaza. We have, we had a very nice panel of people, both citizens and artists and part of our commission to work on the plans for this and find the art that would tell the history of Old Town Plaza. And we believe that we found the right of art for that in that it was once a train station. And we wanted to show how that train station brought a variety of people into our community. We requested on this a proposal, and we sent it out to about 40 arts-based commissions or artists. And we only received two proposals at that time. So the review panel, which consisted of two commissioners, one city staff person, met to review the proposals. We declined those. And then in August 24th, we met again and we are going to support a review panel and pursue another location. again, and we are going to support a review panel and pursue another location in the future for, without need for road disclosures. So we are looking, we are searching always for places to put our art that are most visible to, to others, and to bring color as well as beauty and, and as much history of the community as possible. Our, our commission is always involved in every decision. We sit in on all the meetings, and we are entertaining the, the proposals at our meetings In March, in March, we put on a concert in partnership with the great blues man Mick Martin. I'm sure that most of you in this room are familiar with Mick Martin. He has, he's been all over the world with, with his, was the band that he once had called The Blues Rockers, but they, but now he has a bigger band. And so I wrote a script, and Mick put together a plan, and we, we put together a show that with a company of about twenty. We wanted to tell people the history of how the blues not only began, but the many factions of it that came together from across the country, because the blues didn't, it may have started in Mississippi, but it didn't end there. It went all over, excuse me, all over the United States, and we wanted to tell that story. And not only did we tell that story, we got, we got such a big crowd, we were turning people away at the door on a stormy night. So we were very proud of that. I hope, I know that some of you were there, and, and I hope you enjoyed it as much as we enjoyed putting it on. Then just the end of last month, I believe it was September the 30th, we did a smaller show called The Copa Club, which was probably the most fun of any show that I have, that I've done. People dressed in theme of, because it was about a nightclub in New York in the twenty, in the forties or fifties. I wrote a script for it. We had a company of about, well, we had eight singers in, in our company, plus all the other people it takes to put on a show. It was a wonderful afternoon, and I know that some of you came to the show. I hope you enjoyed attending as much as we enjoyed the performance. Currently, we are in discussions with those who are, who are, we're discussing with the powers that be, the art that will go into the zoo, that is proposed zoo. And so we're, we are reviewing plans for that. We are also looking at, we are participating in a city's Bloomberg Public Art Challenge Grant application. We, we plan to work with the city's entertainment team on an illumination, entertainment, complete the installment of the Old Town Plaza public art, host the Iris Awards, do completion on an additional, additional mural, and create a blues music festival in Elk Grove. This is a plan that we think we can, will bring in people from all over the region. There is no blues festival since the, the big one in Old Sacramento shut down. There's no blues festival anywhere in this area, so.
Commissioner Nan, can I interrupt you just ever so briefly? You're talking about the blues, and I just wanted to know that there's a blue Tesla that's out in the parking lot that staff are working with, and would the owner of the blue Tesla, please make your way out to the front of the, out into the parking lot to assist with the vehicle? Sorry for the interruption, Commissioner, but we just wanted to make sure we take care of this as the incident's going. So the owner of a blue Tesla, if you could go out there, but please continue the blues festival and, but let's bring back the blues that we want to be hearing, right? Not about these ones.
We are also interested in doing the, the art for the new library that site, when it comes on. We are, we are enthusiastic about what we can do for that library. As a writer, I am partial to libraries, and so we, we want our library to be something special here in the future. So I think, I think that's about it at this moment. Do you have anything you want to ask of me?
Thank you, and thank you to the entire Arts Commission for your continued service in bringing the arts enrichment to our community. It is so necessary, so thank you for all that you do, Nan, and your dedication. All the, just so many wonderful programs, so congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Nan, I just want to pile on you and the commissioners, Gary Mendoza, you guys, you ladies and gentlemen, always put together just great performances from, you know, the fifties event a while back, and then the big band and the blues, of course, and now I see a Sacramento ballet performance potentially in the future. So I'm, I'm just really excited about all the works that, that you do and continue to do, and look forward to seeing that performance next year. Thank you so much.
And our very own supervisor, Hume, was involved in the last performance, which was wonderful, to have him part of that as well.
He's an actor.
Yes. All right, well, any other comments from colleagues? Seeing none, I will move on to the next agenda. Thank you so much. So the next agenda, as you recall from earlier in the meeting, we are moving forward the eight point two agenda item now, but I want to reemphasize my comments that I said at the beginning that we, shortly after opening, because this is an agendized public hearing, so it is on the agenda because of the statements that we made last week. So we're required to have this as a public hearing, but please keep in mind that we are in ongoing negotiations in good faith between the city and the applicant. But I know there's a number of speakers who have signed up, so, and you have the right to speak, of course, because it is on the agenda, but please, if you can, keep the comments brief, because again, this item is continuing. So I'm going to jump here.
Did you say continue?
No, so we'll take that.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, do we take the motion now, or should I open this up?
What I recommend you do is, staff's recommendation is the council not take any action on the project itself tonight. I think that was implicit in your comments, Mayor. And so people have the right to speak if they want to, but staff's recommendation, which I think will be fulfilled at the end of this, is that the council continue this out to a date uncertain, not take any action on the item tonight.
We don't need to do that right now. Take the comments.
Don't do that right now. Wait until after you hear any comments.
Okay, wonderful.
Thanks.
All right, so we are, let's see, eight point two. We do have a number of speakers signed up. We will start with Harold Van Dyke.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you. I just want to say thank you for the hard work, and let's keep it up, and hopefully this will be resolved and in our favor. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your brevity. Next up is Ken Chappell, followed by Gene Sadler.
Mayor Singh Allen and City Councilman, I want to thank you for everything you've done so far, and I'm going to kind of hope that we keep up the good work. I know that, that we don't have a resolution, but I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel that everyone can be happy, including the developer, which is, I guess, the overall goal. I have a couple of other comments, but I'm going to hold them. I feel like that's for another time, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Gene Sadler, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, we know that there are complex and difficult issues that you are dealing with while meeting the needs of Elk Grove. I am proud of the way you have handled this proposal. You have stood firm throughout this process, even when informed that expensive lawsuits have been filed by the Attorney General and the developer against Elk Grove. The City Council has proposed a land swap for this project many months ago in order to move it away from Old Town, and I am happy to see that the City Council is working very hard with the developer to make that happen. We are not against housing for the homeless, but this project has been poorly developed and poorly placed within Old Town. The opposition is a protest about what would it do to our Old Town, which the city has been working so hard to revitalize. I am asking the City Council to have the intestinal fortitude required to stop the Oak Roads Project Complex from being built in Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Dee Madruga.
Good evening. I appreciate that you continue negotiations in good faith. However, I'd say I thought that this site was perfect. I liked the size of it, sixty-seven.
Order in the chambers, please.
I liked the idea of just sixty-seven units. I don't like the idea of something built larger somewhere else, because as population grows amongst our supportive housing individuals, it becomes a little bit more complicated, and some other issues could present themselves. Smaller units, smaller facilities are much more functional and operational and work better within communities. I have been very disappointed over these meetings the last several weeks. It is the worst NIMBY meetings I have been to in twenty-two years. There have been many NIMBY projects that have been presented before this council, and I can say the manner and behaviors of the other individuals was much better than what I have seen and witnessed these last three meetings. I have fought hard for all residents within our community, and I believed that we were a city of compassion, that we could show respect to one another even when we don't agree. What I am concerned about in these negotiations is what monies, what taxpayer monies are going to be put forth to move this to another location. What I am concerned about is I believe this area of town is the most walkable. That's why I chose to live on this side of town. And what really disappoints me is most in the audience don't know me and have been making these hateful comments towards me. I can love you back, and I can forgive you for those hateful comments, and I would like you to approach me and talk to me about this. I walk in that area, I've lived here for thirty-six years, and I have seen the differences going on in Old Town. I'd like to believe that when people come out of here from other areas, developers from out of town, that we could choose to treat them a little better, because that is the only way that we will get beyond local developers, and that we can get some bigger money investing into Elk Grove, which is what we need if we want to become that destination, and if we want to become the city you all want, and if you want your Old Town to become what you're dreaming of. Please, I would deserve, I do deserve respect, just as I give you respect and don't boo you with your opposing views. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Dee Madruga, followed by Joe Madruga.
Yes, Dee Madruga, I'm choosing to not speak right now, maybe the next week.
Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Would you like to speak, or you're waving your right?
I'll wave my right.
Thank you. Then our final speaker will be Penelope Leonard.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for being our mayor, and thank you for handling this, and thank you for calling my husband Perry, who couldn't be here tonight. I, on last week, I went downtown to Governor Newsom's office, and I gave him the letter that you received from my husband, right here. These are not residents, these are patients, and this is SB 35 law, which will not allow that to be built in a residential neighborhood. No emotions, it's just the law. I gave it to Governor Newsom, I got up to his office, I spoke to Adrian, his assistant, and Adrian gave me this piece of paper and said, we can visit the governor or get ahold of him, or find out what his schedule is by this piece of paper. So our governor is accessible. Then I went to the Secretary of State right away, because she is the division that is responsible for the health and safety of our community. Patients versus residents. And so it went to her, her assistant Mark came out, and he sent it to her in LA, where she lives. So, and then I went to the McGeorge Law School, to the Tina students, and he said, this law is absolutely correct. Perry's right, this is the law. So we, I explained to Adrian that you guys had months before offered a better solution for these patients, and that they turned it down, that you'd been trying. And so Adrian said he would be sure to tell the governor that, and I just want to thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, ma'am. Penelope is our final speaker on this item, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and I'm looking for a motion to continue this to a date uncertain.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now we're going back to our agenda, and we are on our public comments. We have a number of speakers signed up for items not on the agenda, so just to clarify, these are items not on the agenda. First up, can we get order in the chambers, please? Lot of noise. Let's just give thirty seconds here for folks to leave the chambers, so we can get on with our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming. All right, we're going to start our public comment. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity here. Our first speaker is Margie Jones, followed by Lynn Wheat. Margie? Oh, there we are.
Good evening. Beth Hedlund and I are here from the Strauss Festival of Elk Grove to say thank you to the city of Elk Grove once again for your essential financial and in-kind support for our festival the end of July, Treasure on Strauss Island. Without your support, we couldn't do what we do every year, which is give a full stage production, fireworks, the whole thing, free to anyone that would like to attend, except a small parking charge, of course, but we really appreciate all you do. Also, thank you for the police services you provided and the in-kind support of trash services. All that really makes a difference. All that really makes a difference. Also, thank you, all of you, for attending, or the ones that could, and being part of the stage presentation. And it's interesting, we're following the arts presentation, and you know, so it must be arts night tonight, but we appreciate the opportunity to be here and to provide Elk Grove with our unique Strauss Festival, that there's nothing like it in the region, in the area. I don't even know where there's something like it, and there's nothing that's free. But of course, we have many volunteers and many volunteers' hours that put forth this. So for a third year, we're happy to be here, and we have a plaque to present to you as a thank you.
Do you want us to come down?
Please.
Okay.
Either that or we can go up or something. Getting your exercise tonight, right?
Good to see you as well.
How are you in the middle? Or how do you want to do this? Okay. I'll go.
Yes, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
That's enough, congrats.
All right, next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Estella Drake. Is Lynn Wheat here? Oh, there she is.
So I'm going to keep it really short for a minute because the crowd left that I really wanted to hear this, because it was about affordable housing and how we got to where we are today, but you're all aware of that through our general plan amendments and how originally we would designate land for affordable, but it didn't necessarily need to be built as affordable. And so we just kept, you know, putting the units over till next year, to next year, to next year, to where we are now. I would just like to bring up, and I've talked about it ad nauseam, inclusionary housing and having some of our developers build affordable homes that some of our residents could purchase and actually live in, because when we look at affordable as just apartment complexes, we're putting people into positions that they will never have homeownership, and that's what brings us here today with our big box homes that we build. So I'm just asking that you might consider that. I know it's briefly mentioned in the general plan, but I think that we could get some home builders to do that and maybe seep in all the thousands of homes that are going to come in the future, because Pat Hume told me one time, when he got tired of hearing me, that it is going to be more retail and rooftops, that we can have a variety of rooftops instead of affordable apartments and big boxes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Estella Drake, followed by Kat Mendoza.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff. Today, we are here to give you an update on what is not happening at our beloved Elk Grove Animal Shelter and the death of our TNR program. We are in dire need of a veterinarian since our beloved vet, Mary, quit, and we no longer have a full-time, permanent veterinarian on staff, and things have even gotten worse for our community and feral cats, as you will hear from the other speakers. How are we going to hire dedicated veterinarians when the competition is offering a much more competitive salary and we are still offering a salary from four years ago? Please take a look at what I handed out earlier this evening, so you can see the comparison from a nonprofit SPCA. "We taxpayers and your constituents request that the veterinarian salary be competitive, and all we want is for our city to step it up so we can find the veterinarians needed as soon as possible." I feel like this is Groundhog Day over and over again, and I'm sure you will like us to change the subject and not have to keep seeing us over and over again, right? We've been coming here for like 14 months. As a reminder, while this keeps going on over and over again, tomcats don't use condoms, and mama cats keep having kittens over and over again. Please open up the TNR program because 2024, and I kid you not, is going to be worse than 2023 if Elk Grove keeps letting this drag on. As you know, it's really bad out there with over 20,000 cats in our community. We all want to work together as a team, and we kid you not, as a team, and to get this craziness under control and not receiving the TNR support that is greatly needed is a sad day for all of us. Please get us the new veterinarians we are all requesting without further delay, and please pay them what they deserve so they don't ditch us and go elsewhere. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just as an FYI, our city manager will be addressing some of those needs as part of the city manager's report, so stay tuned for that portion. Next up is Kim, or no, sorry, Kat Mendoza, followed by Kim Mendoza.
Okay. Good evening. How many of you would feel comfortable waiting in your car for hours after midnight on Florin Perkins and Elder Creek Road with no security or bathroom access? This is a reality for volunteer cat trappers. The cost of taking an injured cat or a sick community cat to this SPCA walk-in clinic falls on us. I have emailed you all about the costs regarding foxtail removals and wound cleanings during the week that TNR was closed in Elk Grove. I couldn't wait until the vet returned from vacation to have a cat sitting there with a chest wound and a foxtail stuck in their eye. So I sat in my car for four hours waiting for baby who needed a chest wound cleaning. I sat and eventually fell asleep with another cat, Big Orange, for five hours so that the SPCA could remove his foxtail. There were many, many others. I have paid between $15 and $40 per cat, depending on the health issue. This might not seem like much, but if you trap large unmanaged colonies, these costs add up quickly. These are very broad examples of the community cat crisis. Trappers are becoming a second shelter. We are spaying and neutering out of pocket at $85 per surgery, which is the low-cost option at CSN. This does not include their vaccines, which is also an additional cost. With no shelter vet, access to spay and neuter are limited, and community cats and kittens are the second-class citizens. Trappers line up as early as 10:30 PM the night before to be one of 10 lucky participants in getting one community cat fixed. CSN booked out hundreds of appointments in 24 minutes. Several of these trappers are here today asking you to take action. Councilmember Brewer and Robles, you came onto this council late in the game, but you have been here long enough to hear our concerns month after month, and we are still here a year later asking for help. So here's an idea. Can we organize a fundraiser with local restaurants where 10% of purchases goes towards spay and neuter surgeries of community cats? Can you ask Cafe Elk Grove the next time you are there for a taxpayer-funded lunch? It's disappointing that elected officials choose to ignore our emails and won't make the effort to communicate or help those in need, especially vulnerable animals. Think about that the next time you're sitting on a taxpayer-funded flight to New York or in your taxpayer-funded bed at the Hyatt. It must be nice to have taxpayer funds to rely on. Could you spare some of the general fund for the community cats? Thank you.
Next up is Kim Mendoza, followed by Paula Schlekelman. No, it's Kim Mendoza first.
Oh, it was you?
Yeah.
Hello, I would like to share with you what Elk Grove Animal Services staff said about the TNR program. As a reminder, relief veterinary staff was mentioned in the city manager's report after my public comment at the previous meeting. I emailed the shelter manager to ask if the use of contract vets and veterinary hospitals would be used for the TNR program, and this was her response. Our TNR program will be on hiatus until further notice. With the schedules of the contract vets and the low capacity for spay-neuter appointments through the veterinary hospitals, our spay-neuter capacity is significantly limited. What do you all anticipate kitten season will be like come spring 2024? This year's kitten season was brutal, and we actually had a veterinarian. There were more kittens than could be possibly accommodated in kennels. If you remember, 80% of kittens in shelters come from a community cat. Managed colonies can prevent the cycle of endless breeding. I was able to do it in my neighborhood. Litter after litter were born until I stepped in and had each cat spayed and neutered through the community spay-neuter clinic and Elk Grove Animal Shelter. It has been three years without a single kitten born in the backyard. Neighbors are no longer needing animal control to come pick up sick kittens that were born in their shrubs. Trappers have already brought up trapping at hotspots, but we need a TNR program to spay and neuter these cats. Do you remember what other options there are for feral spay-neuter? Two clinics in the region service all of Sacramento County and surrounding cities. One of the clinics is in a heavy industrial zoning site. There are not many people around the facility at odd hours in the morning when trappers begin to line up. It is not safe enough to refer people to this clinic where no security is present. Elk Grove trappers are waiting patiently as you continue your search for a veterinarian to reopen the TNR program, but please remember, our safety is jeopardized when we have to wait in parking lots in industrial sites. We ask you to attempt to find a veterinarian as quickly as possible, and what is your plan to hire a shelter veterinarian as soon as possible? I sent the email of concerns, and as expected, I didn't get a response back. I only sent it to one person this time. I will forward it to everyone. Hopefully, I can hear back. Thank you.
Next up is Paula Schlekelman, followed by Stacy Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I want to first say that I'm appalled at the fact that we still do not have a shelter vet or several vets part-time hired to accommodate a TNR program, which there are funds for that cannot be used. What a coincidence that we would get a grant of $125,000, and now we can't use it. We are going to the SPCA at 1:30 in the morning, guys. 1:30 in the morning, we're sitting there. I mean, we are sleeping in our cars, waiting for that one little spot of 10 to get a cat in to the vet to be spayed or neutered. And this is to ensure ourselves a spot, to keep the commitments that we had made to folks prior to our shelter vet resigning. Okay, we already had these commitments to trap and get these cats in. We still have to do that. Not to mention the obstacles that continue to surface at the SPCA. They're coming up to us, me and my trapping buddy, saying that they're going to implement a new thing where there's only one person per car, per cat. So we're not even allowed to sit in the same car together and bring two cats per car. So the obstacles continue to arise, and this is why we need a shelter vet here in our community. We trapped one of the cats that went into the SPCA. We took three cats in. The cat was in its second trimester of pregnancy, and we were told that the kittens had died within the cat, in her womb, and that if the mother had tried to give birth, this complication would have resulted in her death. These are things we are trying to prevent, and we demand that the TNR program be re-implemented as soon as is possible at the Elk Grove Animal Shelter with a new vet or several contract vets, but we need to get this job done. Remember, we voted you in, and we can vote you out.
Next up is Stacy Peterson, followed by Julie Verga.
Go put my last name on there. Hello again, we're back. So as we've all heard, we only have our one and only vet changed or quit, resigned, and now we have no vet. So here she left for a better career opportunity. What kind of better opportunity could that be? Could it be money, benefits? Probably both. We are slacking on giving her anything comparable to the other vets, and that's shameful. I'm sure you all know that when you have a high demand and constant need for like law enforcement, first responders, medical practitioners, politicians, et cetera, a position is difficult to fill and the stress levels and risk levels are high, the salary increases to help entice applicants to apply. So now we sit with a vet at Elk Grove Shelter without a vet, and the only occasional contract vet to help fix only the current shelter animals, and we no longer have our measly 16 TNR spots we had per week. Boy, talk about making progress in the wrong direction. We have regressed a football field. At our first meeting in October of '22, I mentioned that I had trapped over 150 community cats since 2019. I am now currently only doing friendly cats because that is all I can get appointments for and don't have to wait outside SPCA all night long. I recently went to SPCA at midnight two nights in a row just to help two separate residents get their trapped cats that weren't caught as planned. The first night, I gave up my spot at 7:00 AM to a gentleman that had an injured and extremely feral male, and he was being denied. When he was told he was 11 out of 10, he says, "I guess I'll just have to release it." He was heartbroken and crying, so I gave him my spot. I sure wish SPCA would sign up online like Elk Grove Shelter was starting to do because it has definitely been an unsafe adventure sitting outside. We had a homeless guy reach into a vehicle over the woman's face, trying to get her purse while she was asleep. Car chases on the fence on the other side over. It's dangerous. Resident trappers, I'm sure, are not going to be as crazy to do all the stuff that we trappers are doing, and so they'll end up just releasing them back out, and then again, the sex and all the births will just happen. Sacrificing, like the commercials say, for the price of only two cups of coffee a day, you could feed 10 hungry children in a month. If we can all cut back a little something out of our daily Starbucks, expensive meals, and the ability to help fix several cats and dogs each month, we can start getting this contract vets hired to help. I'm sure you saw the post about the mayor cleaning trash. It's everyone's responsibility. We all need to participate. Thank you.
Next up is Julie Verga, followed by Maria Calderon.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to address concerns raised by fellow Elk Grove advocates regarding the loss of the one and only shelter vet that they had. To be clear, there are life and death consequences for animals when there is no staff veterinarian. Sick or injured animals will be turned away in violation of law. Injured or sick but treatable animals may be subject to euthanasia as a default to prevent suffering or cruelty with no staff vet and limited off-site contract vets. Now vital TNR and spay-neuter services are canceled as well. The epic crisis of overpopulation will only continue unabated, certainly in part because the shelter has turned away unaltered animals at their door in violation of law. No veterinarian should be an emergency. Hiring vets requires creative marketing, robust job postings, bonus and incentive strategies. We see competitive shelters offering flex hours, moving and signing bonuses. Shelter vets in San Francisco are making $245,000 a year. Bakersfield, $170,000 a year. Modesto, $130,000 to $195,000 a year, plus thousands in signing and moving bonuses. Per your own CityGate study, the shelter veterinarian team relayed that they were unable to catch their breath. Perhaps it's time to reevaluate the staffing for this vital department. The fact is, all veterinarians have leverage now, but solutions can always be found if there is sincere effort put forth. We have seen that in local, regional shelters, Fresno in particular. Continuing to rely on spay-neuter clinics such as the SPCA makes no sense and will only cause more problems. When we learned Elk Grove would be losing their only veterinarian September 26, we reached out to help. We asked Director Humley if she was interested in high-volume contract vets. She said yes. We asked if we could tour the facility. We asked if we could tour the facility with the spay neuter, high-volume spay neuter surgical team we work with. We have not heard anything back yet, and it's been weeks. We have experienced very similar circumstances at Front Street. They were offered a high-volume spay neuter surgical team in their budget on a silver platter, and they had no interest. Their lack of effort to find spay neuter solutions is shameful. Even with their vast resources, their lackluster efforts have caused the unnecessary suffering and death of animals. Please don't let this fate happen at this Elk Grove Shelter. Animals and citizens deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Calderon, followed by Cecilia Valette.
Good evening. I'm not here to say we told you so, but you know, we're here again. What is, I want to talk about today is the present and going on forward in the future. So right now, we're coming to the end of the kitten season, more or less. It seems like it goes on later every year. So there's about a month and a half where female cats will not be breeding because of the time change and the weather. So in this time between, I would say, November to mid-December is very important and crucial for feral cats to be TNR'd. Why? Because there's the males and the females that need to be TNR'd, along with all the kittens that they had in this last 2023 kitten season that will also need to be TNR'd. You guys cannot afford to put TNR in hold for this time being of not having a vet. The vet is crucial because if there's no vet and there's no TNR, this next kitten season will be explosive, and the whole county, the whole city will be paying for this problem. Cats are pregnant for about three months, so let's say mid-December to January, they get pregnant. About March to April, they're going to all be having their litters of kittens by then. I'm asking you tonight to, whatever you can do to try to get the TNR back in progress at Elk Grove Shelter. I'm not even an Elk Grove citizen. I'm from Sacramento, and it's not fair to us. We are already scarce with our resources. As you heard, CSN is booked all the way to 2024. There's no appointments for any community cats, as well as SPCA. It's not fair for people to be waiting in their car overnight to get, when the circumstances are not safe, and they're coming way farther just to get one cat TNR'd. I believe that you can get the contract vet to somehow do the sixteen spaces that they were doing a week for Elk Grove. It's not fair because, I mean, Sacramento, we shouldn't be picking up the slack for what you guys have been warned for over a year to do. And also, to say to Mr. Spees, I think is his name, I believe that you, your residence is in the Elk Grove, close to Elk Grove Shelter. Last time you spoke, when we had the meeting, when we were talking about the, getting another vet, you said that this wasn't a very important, you know, subject to you. What happens when people are, when Elk Grove Shelter isn't intaking animals and they're dumping them to Elk Grove Shelter, and that maybe goes into where your neighborhood or any of your guys' neighborhoods? Because people are going to start dumping kittens. It's going to be, get to the point where no one's going to have resources because Elk Grove is not going to be able to intake the, all the animals that are going to be born in 2024. Already, they're not in the intaking because of the vet, because of what's been happening, but it's going to be even worse. By May, I can promise you, they will not be intaking like they should, and it's going to fall back on everybody, including you guys. So I ask for now, please get the TNR resources back to Elk Grove as they were before, and then we can discuss further on. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do need to correct a factual statement. I do not live near the shelter, nor did I ever say this wasn't a concern to me. That was never stated by me. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments today.
Cecilia, is it Valette?
Tillit.
I'm sorry, how do you say it?
Tillit, T-I-L-L.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I have a V here, that's why.
That's okay. Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. This is an emotional subject for me. I have a huge animal advocate. We are called steward over them. They have rights, legal rights, and specifically in this state, the burden because of Elk Grove not doing their job is falling on CSN, Sacramento, SPCA, Diamond Springs, up in Animal Outreach, Auburn. I have spoken with and have taken cats to all of those locations in the last few weeks, including sitting with my fellow trappers at 1:00 in the morning over at SPCA. It's out of control. It needs attention, and it needs it now. We need to start thinking out of the box. I am a former talent acquisition manager for a local, large tech company. The staffing shortages are nationwide in every industry. What is Elk Grove doing? Are we looking at sign-on bonuses? Are we looking at relocation incentives? Are we looking at taking some salary decreases in order to raise the vet salaries? Are we looking at these things? Nugget Market right up the road is paying $500 sign-on bonuses to get cashiers. What are we doing in Elk Grove? I have lived here for 27 years. I have never seen anything like this. I took a colony eight years ago of over 300 cats. Today, there's 12 because of TNR. That is not what it's going to be tomorrow. We are six steps forward, 10 steps back right now, and something needs to be done, and it needs to be done now to fix this. Elk Grove should be looking for two DVMs, not one, two. Even before Vet Mary left, we had appointments, and they were canceled because she didn't make it back from vacation, or because she was sick, or because of something. Life happens. We get that. We need to be proactive, not reactive in this city. And we have been reactive. We are not taking a proactive approach in this situation, and it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be reevaluated here and now. Every day, we are losing ground with these precious animals.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up is Kathy Schiffer, and that will be our final speaker.
Hi, I've never spoken before to the council or the mayor before, so good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm really here to ask a question. There was some, a large tree removal in Beschert Park, which is on 566 Adobe Springway, this last week. Those were trees that were planted when Elk Grove was planned. They've been there for the whole 36 years that I've lived in Elk Grove. They were already planted at that point, and they had signs on them saying that the Consumer Services District was the, or the person who, the people who were going to remove the trees, and we should contact them if we had any questions. So I did, along with several other neighbors. I walk the park every day. And they said, pretty much every time you called them, it was a different answer. But I was told it was PG&E's responsibility, so I called PG&E. PG&E said, we don't supply electricity to Elk Grove, it's SMUD. So I called SMUD. SMUD said, we don't know anything about this project. So then I called the Consumer Services District back, and I got a different answer. Basically, I think, other people who did the same thing got the same runaround. The day that the trees were cut down, I stopped and asked the people who were doing the tree removal, you know, why they were being removed. They didn't know, obviously. They were just there to do the job. And I finally spoke to two of their managers, and they said it was PG&E because of the high-power lines, which are extremely high and far away from those trees. And then I called PG&E back, and I spoke to someone who said it was the city of Elk Grove, that they wanted them removed because they didn't want to have to pay annual fees for these trees to be pruned. So I'm here to find out, A, why were they removed? This is a pistachio tree. I have one in my front yard. They don't get very tall. Their limbs don't come off in big storms, so they're not a problem with those power lines, which are super high. They're already mature. I have one, I hardly ever prune it. It's not annuals, maybe every five years. They're a wonderful tree, and now there's just nothing there. It's just hot sun coming in. People barbecue and, and have, you know, picnics, and it was a beautiful area, and now it looks barren. And I would like to know who put that forward? Who was responsible?
I can direct you to staff. Is there some staff that can maybe meet with you to address that? But I, you're not, this is not on the agenda, so we can't have an actual discussion, but is there some staff member that can meet with you in the hallway or something?
Yeah, I'd be happy to meet with her.
With you, with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Wilson will meet with you.
All right.
Okay, thank you. That is our final speaker, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. And we are now on item number six, our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. First, let me address some of the comments, obviously, about the, our veterinarian or our TNR programs. I know there's a lot of passion about this, and I appreciate all those that have spoken this evening and their passion for the animals in our community. I think I can speak for everybody in here that we share that, that love and concern for the animals, none more so than the individuals who work tirelessly at our animal shelter, caring and providing the services for those, those animals. And we're happy, there's, I think, some misunderstanding and misinformation that's circling out there, that we'd be happy to sit down with those individuals that spoke tonight and try to clarify some things and help them understand what we're doing. We're moving as quickly as we can to try to address the staffing, the current staffing issues that we have. Just so, just so that it's clear, our veterinarian has been gone less than two weeks. She left on September 29th. Since then, we've brought in contract veterinarian services to continue to provide the necessary service for the animals in the animal shelter. There is an impact on TNR, we admit that. There are other services that are available elsewhere. The speaker spoke to some of the impacts on there. I would like to remind the audience, as well as the council, that up until just a couple years ago, there was no veterinarian in Elk Grove. There was no animal shelter. There was no services. They were all provided elsewhere. The City Council, the city invested millions and millions of dollars in not only building a new facility, hiring staff, hiring a veterinarian, and the amount of work, energy, money, investments that have gone into that over that period of time has been significant. And we're proud of the work that's been done over that period of time. We're proud of the staff that we have and the service, care, compassion that they give to that community every day. So is it perfect? No, but we are working tirelessly to make sure those needs are met. To speaking directly to the veterinarian position, we have been examining the salary and what we can do because we recognize there is a nationwide veterinarian shortage, and what can we do to get the best qualified person in the doors as quickly as we can? So I can assure you that we are, we are working on that. We have a recommendation that will be coming back to the City Council in two, two weeks to significantly increase the salary of that position, as well as institute a $10,000 signing bonus for that position. We're, we're expected to post that this week, and that we can then get an official approval from the City Council in a couple of, in a couple of weeks. So we're moving as quickly as we can. We're going to do everything we can to get the word out nationwide, to make sure that people understand what we're doing, make sure the salary is competitive, make sure we have everything in place to be able to get that. But I don't want to, I want to make sure people understand that recruitments take time. We're not going to have somebody in here in two weeks. Typically, our recruitments take anywhere from three to six months. I know City of Sacramento, when they did a recruitment, it was almost a year before they had a veterinarian onboard. So I don't want to make promises, but I can assure you that we will move as quickly as we can to get the position filled by a highly qualified person. And so we will continue to do that. We're happy to meet with those individuals that spoke to explain more, answer those questions, to assure them we're doing everything that we can to care for that, that community here in Elk Grove. So if the council has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Jason, thank you for, for that explanation, and I also want to take the opportunity to thank all our animal shelter employees and staff. I know they, they live it every day, just like these folks do too, so the, the passion for, on both sides is there. I just have a question about one position versus two. Have you looked at that, and can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, you probably remember, we just had this conversation a few weeks ago.
Right.
Right now, we're focused on getting the position filled. Even the veterinarian that left didn't feel that two positions was necessary, that we can handle the demand and the workload.
Excuse me.
With the veteran, the problem with hiring additional, a second veterinarian, you have to hire a whole team of technicians, assistants to go along with that position. So it's not just a matter of getting an additional veterinarian. It's an entire, another team of veterinarians, and then their staffing that goes along with it. And it's just not a recommendation right now. We hired an outside consultant that came in and took a look at that for us, and they too didn't feel that that was necessary at this time, that there were a lot of other needs in the shelter that we've, that we're in the process of addressing, including hiring additional care staff, animal service officers. There's a lot of staffing needs, and the veterinarian was not at the top of that list.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Did you have another, more to report out, or just that item?
I always have other things.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yes, I will, I will try to be brief. So at the last meeting, we talked about the city's winter sanctuary, the enhanced winter sanctuary. And so the city and the gathering in are inviting the community to attend two upcoming meetings to learn more about the enhanced winter sanctuary. A learning session is scheduled on Monday, October 16th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the site, the former Rite Aid building located 96 Yelker Boulevard. At the meeting, residents will have an opportunity to meet the management team, ask questions, and learn more about the program and the safeguards being implemented to serve and protect participants, as well as the members of the community. We'll also be having a drop-in open house on Thursday, October 26th, from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock at the same location, to provide a firsthand look at the space, again, meet the team, and share information on preparations in place prior to opening the facility on November 1st. More information is also available on our website. There is a high school marching band competition coming up at Franklin High School. That's coming on October 14th. There will be road closures, so just keep an eye open for that. There's, this next one is, is going to be interesting. There's a competition, friendly competition from the police department and the fire department called Badges Versus Axes. It's a charitable basketball game. It's coming up on October 14th. It's Saturday, 6:00 at Elk Grove High School Cartwright Gym. Bragging rights are on the right. We're going to bring it, right, chief? All right. All the proceeds from this benefit the Special Olympics, so really a great opportunity to come out and have a good time and know that the money's going to a good cause. We'll be pulling for our, our guys. Speaking of animal services and animal shelter, Elk Grove Animal Services is waiving adoption fees for all shelter animals through Sunday, October 15th, as part of Adoptober Fest. The animal shelter is filled with adorable cats, dogs, and even an adoptable bunny. With more animals become available every day, the animal shelter is located, of course, 9150 Union Parkway. You can also review any of those animals online on our website. Help support our community with donations of new and unopened package items at a donation drive. This is going to be at City Hall, October 20th, from 9:00 to 6:00 PM, and the 21st. Hosted by the Elk Grove Community Action Network, which is members of, of the staff here at the city of Elk Grove. Donations directly benefit Elk Grove residents through several area nonprofits. For a list of items needed, visit our website. And our final Friday in the Grove activity is coming up on October 20th. Tickets are nearly sold out for this event. Join the city, Elksplora Grove and Sacramento's Laughs Unlimited for a special outdoor comedy performance at Old Town Plaza. Again, October 20th, 7:00 o'clock. General admission tickets are still available for $10 a person. And then finally, City and Sacramento area bicycle advocates will host a free bicycle education class for all ages at the Old Town Plaza on Saturday, October 21st, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Residents of all ages can learn about bike control skills, some street riding rules and techniques from an LCI-certified instructor. Class space is limited, bring a working bike and a helmet, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you again for that update. All right, next up is our consent calendar items. I'll open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve consent.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And just as a notation, Councilmember Robles won't be attending the rest of the meeting, so. All right, our next item is 8.1.
That's a public hearing to consider the 63rd annexation to stormwater drainage
And council members, I'm Vijay Maitri, finance analyst for the city.
I'm Vijay Maitriya, finance analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. The city maintains eight special tax districts, which provide funding for infrastructure or services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary accordingly to geographic location and building use. The special tax districts are subject to annual rate adjustments. On August 23rd, 2023, the council, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the project's parcels shown on the screen. One Charrington Lane map project into special tax districts and establish tonight's public hearings. The project is being proposed for annexation into the following special tax districts. Stormwater drainage fee, Zone 2. Stormwater drainage and maintenance. This is the 63rd annexation into stormwater drainage fee, Zone 2. This assessment will be levied in perpetuity. What is the project? The project is one Charrington Lane map, which consists of four single-family residential units located southeast of Calvine Road and Beto Road. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I am available for any questions.
All right, thank you for your presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is not closed. Any questions or comments? If not, a little.
Mayor, I have another interruption.